I'm going to call this meeting Gloucester School Committee Potter. I remind everybody that our mission at Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners, and I'll ask you to join me in a second.
(inaudible)
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 Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. (inaudible) we move on to recognitions. You saw the play at O'Malley?
I did, I saw Mary Poppins, I went to the Sunday that day, and it was an exceptional production there, I think you were there for opening night? Exactly. So, with that said, they've got at least two casts, Mary Poppins?
Yes.
They've got at least two casts or so, they had three or four productions last weekend, they had three or four productions coming up this weekend, and it was very well orchestrated, exceptionally well performed, highly technical in nature because they had built a whole host of different sets-
Oh, it's amazing.
-which required frequent transitions that were smooth as silk, it was terrific.
I'm going against Sunday, I always go to all three casts.
Yeah, yeah.
Seventy-three students, so we all have to go.
It's great, it's really good. Very pleasant.
And Don't We Get East Gloucesters coming up too. Alice in Wonderland.
Alice in Wonderland is coming up, we have the high school, which we'll probably hear about, the musicals coming up.
Yes.
And...
(inaudible)
There's the wax museum-
The wax museum.
...coming up, we have Legos Marshall from the second, surprising. And at the same time, the high school is doing its environmental report on coastal, potential coastal flooding, it's an annual presentation that they provide for us. The Power of Play, sponsored by the Master Education Foundation, is taking place on Sunday, March 24th. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say then, to say?
No, come one, come all, it's a lot of fun, and it's sponsored by the Cape Town Savings Bank, and very well attended, there's always about 200 to 250 people by month.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) Remember the last time you and I got to a hoo-hoo?
You were to you were the hoo-hoo queen.
No, it's not happening this time.
And the career and...
Yes, the college and career fair is Monday, tomorrow at 5:30, also in the Field House, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, and annually, it's the fifth annual, and they usually have at least 70 to 80 colleges and universities represented, plus a whole host of different career options, as well as so parents and students get a chance to speak with all these different representatives from college, and get a feel, juniors in particular get a feel for what might be interesting to them out there in the college. And, we see, we have received a letter dated March 6th, the high school's accreditation. The College Committee on Public Secondary Schools, that is January 27th, 28th, 2019, reviewed the report from the recent collaborative conference visit to Gloucester High School and voted to award the school continued accreditation in the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and the committee also states that it was impressed with many of the programs and services and wishes to commend. And then there's a whole bullet list, I won't go into, but briefly, but safe, positive, respectful, and inclusive culture, students feel that they're known, that somebody knows them and recognizes them, a committed professional culture, intellectual risk-taking is encouraged, leadership principle that promotes growth mindset, we've talked about higher-order thinking skills, development of a vision of a graduate that includes transferable skills, knowledge, understandings, and dispositions, and curriculum which requires learners to demonstrate depth of understanding over mere breadth of knowledge. So, kudos, they've done terrific work, they had to go through almost a year's worth of self-evaluation and examination, they presented that report, and the requisite follow-through, and they have been approved for their accreditation.
Anything else, any other recognitions? Okay, then we will move on to our Gloucester High School Student Advisory Council.
Hello. So, first off, we have the Doc Siders, our band, are the Doc Siders a jazz band, or are they just a band?
Jasmine.
Jasmine. So, Doc Siders Jazz Band has a wine and beer tasting fundraiser Saturday, March 16th, so actually this Saturday, at 6:30 at the Gloucester House, so you guys can turn out there. Our junior event is March 22nd, is up and coming, at the Essex Room, Heinz Woodman's, from 6 to 10, I believe. The spring sports are almost in full swing, tryouts are next Monday, the 18th.
Yeah, so last week, we had a lot of events going on, so last Friday was the sophomore event, which was very successful, there was about 115 people in attendance, so it was a great fundraiser for the sophomore class. Last week, we also had our Gloucester Decade Club, and our Massachusetts competitors go to the conference at the Heinz Convention Center, at the Marriott Epple Copley, at the Prudential Center, and we had numerous people place and go on stage, we had Ruby Melvin, she plays seventh, and we had Eliana Faria plays-
What? Furia.
Furia, I'm sorry. Plays third in her second role play, and myself and our advisor, Ms. Ann Grissette, will be moving on to our international competition in Orlando at the end of April.
Congratulations.
And we have our next blood drive on Friday at the Field House, and we have about 35 donors so far, and our NHS will be running that as well.
Questions?
I'm sorry, did you mention the production of Mamma Mia?
Oh, yes, I'm not exactly sure of the date of Mamma Mia, but you do know the date?
Yes, April 4th through the 6th.
April 4th through 6th, all right, April 4th through April 6th will be the production of Mamma Mia. I've heard, I have a lot of friends in the production, I've heard it's going to be fantastic, and Mamma Mia is fantastic anyway, so very cute.
If I may, I had an opportunity to speak with Melissa Orlando, Emily Frick, and Sarah Werner, they came on Superintendent's Corner, and their enthusiasm is off the charts, it sounds like a terrific production, we have a chance to see some video clips which will be on the show as well, and my sense is going to be a great, great production, April 4th through April 6th.
One thing while she's in the process of that is, as I'm sure you're aware, we have two people placed from the Gloucester Youth Awareness Program, run by the Moose Organization, so Jessie Alexander got second in the Massachusetts Rhode Island, and myself got third, and Rachel Bellinger got eighth, I believe, so Jessie is going on to internationals in Philadelphia at the end of April, and a chance to win a lot more money and scholarships.
Great.
One more thing. So, the GHS Ecology and the Environmental Science students are putting on a presentation, as they did last year, about the areas vulnerable to storm surges and the sea level rise, Friday, March 22nd, so next Friday, the date of junior event, in the GHS cafeteria at 10:20 to 11:00 a.m. And I did this last year, it's actually really, really interesting, I did a project on downtown, it's really interesting to see how many areas are going to be really affected by this due to Gloucester Vegan Island, and the sea levels rising, and you saw, everyone saw last year on how the Gloucester football field had like four feet of water in it, and it's just were slowly sinking, and it's actually really cool to see different areas.
Let's say.
Basically, and sea level rises, and oceans coming up. I think that's it for most.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, my apologies.
See you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks.
The consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove?
I move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, two members. And we'll move on to our feature presentation of the evening, a presentation from Dornwoodier about East Gloucester Building Project, and Michelle Rogers is here for this presentation, and here she is.
You're not, oh, you're in that way.
Excuse me.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Michelle Rogers, I'm from Dornwoodier Architects, and I am the project manager for the East Gloucester Project, and I'm from Dornwoodier, and you may remember us from our previous work here, a lot of familiar faces there, this is our project team, Don Walter and Brad Dorr are our principals in charge, Giovanna Chason, who actually grew up here in Gloucester, is the head of our interiors department, Jason Boone, you may remember, is our educational planner, and some of you probably never met Dave Mensur, but he is our project architect, and really strong team, so we brought back together the same team that we had years ago to help with this project here. Our focus, it's not just us, there's like 60 people in our firm, so it's a very strong team. Our focus, for those of you who don't know us, is public work, and we've been working with the city of Gloucester for years now, since we did the West Parish School, we've also done the elementary school master plan, we're working on the public facilities master plan, and we are also working on the library here in Gloucester, so we are heavily involved in Gloucester, we really enjoy working with the community. So, one of the works that we do remember us from is the West Parish School, and I believe that there will be a tour of the West Parish School for those of you who are not familiar with the school, so that you can become more familiar with the school, that tour's opening on Saturday.
Saturday, 9 to 11.
Great.
Just show up.
Yeah, if you have the opportunity to see the school, it will help you with understanding what we're trying to do at the East Gloucester School. So, it's not just me on this team, it's actually the Massachusetts School Building Authority, under the MSBA, they're going to help fund this project, it's your OPMs, who are still here, Roger's here with us tonight, and it's you, the school committee, those who you elected to the school building committee, the school administration, and members of the community, and all together as a team, we're a team for this project moving forward. So, why are we here? We're here because of them, the kids, and our project, the first thing that we're trying to do is determine what the educational needs of this community are, what the facility needs are of the East Gloucester School, and then we're trying to develop options to resolve those needs. We're not here to build a building, we're here to solve problems and help you move forward with your educational program needs. The result of that is some kind of a project, more than likely, and whether that's a new building or renovated building, that's part of the process that we're going through right now. The process that we've been asked to do is a feasibility study, for feasibility through schematic design, and we'll get into that in just a moment. So, how do we do that? Well, we develop an educational program, and we outline your district goals, and the way that we're doing that is you, as a school committee, have chosen a school building committee, and from that group, we've broken that down into a working group, and then into a leadership group, and these groups are helping us outline the educational program and define the district goals. We've met several times with each one of these groups, and I'm going to take you through some of the work that we've done, but some of the things that we need to explore is options. And the MSBA has told us that we have two design enrollment options that we need to look at, that is for a school of 230 students, which would be East Gloucester students alone, or a combined school with East Gloucester and introductions within that school, and that would be a 440 student school. So, two design enrollments, we've been given three sites to look at, they are the East Gloucester site, the Veterans Memorial site, and a site that we call Green Street site. So, if we look at that, we have options that we need to explore, what is the renovation of the existing building? That's the East Gloucester building. One is looking at additions and renovations to that existing building, and one is looking at a new building on that existing site. We have similar qualifications, we have to look at the Veterans Memorial, that would be additions and renovations for combined school on that site, and a new building on that site, and then we have the Green Street site that we need to look at, and for each one of those options, with the exception of this one, we need to look at both those enrollments, oh, I'm sorry, for those two, we need to look at both of those enrollments, so that's combined 10 options off the bat that we need to be looking at. So, that's part of the feasibility, we look at all of those options, and then we begin to talk about what is best for the community. So, the work that we've done to date, with the leadership group, we've developed a space summary, which I'll take you through in a moment, we've envisioned the student experience, what would it be like, what is the goal of the city of Gloucester for their students when they come into their school? We've developed building diagrams and space adjacencies, what's the perfect space adjacencies if you could develop your perfect building? And then we've developed guiding principles, these are the principles that we will use as we move forward and begin to design a building, they'll be used as a measuring tool to see how successful we are with our final results. So, a space program. For those of you who are not familiar with the MSBA program, the MSBA gives us these space programs, and you can consider this a recipe, so think about that, if you want to bake a cake, or do anything, you have to start with how much do I need, and how much of each ingredient do I need? So, we start with a number of students, and I know you can't see this, but we plug in a number of students for each option, and the MSBA kicks out a number of spaces that you need, and a square footage for each of those spaces, they give you a recipe, that's a starting point. Then what you get to do is mix in what you think you need as a district, so in this particular district, we feel that we need more special education spaces than the MSBA has in their basic recipe, and we feel that we need more classroom spaces than the MSBA has in theirs. So, once you do that, you come out with your proposed total gross score footage, and you measure it against what the MSBA says, and then you go and propose that to the MSBA, that is part of the feasibility study. So, some of the work that we did with the leadership group is we looked at the special education programs and the core academic spaces, and for 230 students, we're looking at a proposed building that is 59,130 gross square feet, that number's going to adjust a little bit over the next few months before we get to the MSBA, but that's where we're starting. For 440 students, we're looking at 87,431 gross square feet, same thing, I'm sorry if I'm in your way.
(inaudible).
So, the same thing, we're, might be adjusting that a little bit, but that's where our starting point is for this. And for those of you who prefer a graphic a little bit better, this is what that looks at when we're looking at a graphic, so for consolidated school, that would be 440 students, what you see here in blue would be all your core classrooms, in pink would be your special education, red, art, music, cafeteria, media center, dining, administration, what you see between these two, when you look at this, is that your media center, your health center, your dining, your administration, custodial, your art, music, and those categories remain the same, whether you're talking about consolidated school or a 230 student school, all of those spaces are adjusted, they value the exact same square footage. The difference is in how much special education spaces you need, which become, you have here and a little bit efficiencies here because you're consolidating, and then the number of classrooms, we have four classrooms per grade here, and two classrooms per grade in a 230 student school. That's the difference between the 230 and 440. Part of the other work that we did was talking about spatial relationships. We worked with the principals and Dr. Sapphire to come up with what the best spatial adjacency would be for the idealized building. We talked about separating spaces public from what we call private, but really academic spaces, so that the public could use spaces after school hours, things like the cafeteria and the gymnasium, perhaps the art and the music for performances, perhaps the library, those kinds of spaces might be available to the public after hours, but then you want to be able to close off the academic areas for security reasons, so we wanted to be able to divide a school in a way, or design a school in a way that you could do those, have those functions. So, the diagram looks at this borderline being half a media center, perhaps would be open to the public, you would have core academics with your embedded special education spaces, you might gain your cafeteria and your gymnasium next to each other, and provide spaces that could interact with each other around the building. What we're not showing here is your separation, one of the things that we discussed equally as much was the separation and circulation of site traffic, and separating parent drop-off from buses, and making sure that pedestrian walking spaces were completely separate from cars. So, that was part of the work that we did with the leadership group, and the final part of the work, and I don't expect you to remember all of this, it is available to you when this gets posted online, we developed guiding principles, and these guiding principles will guide us from beginning to end of this project. Bit of a living document, we're going to add to it as we move forward through the rest of the feasibility study, but this is where we started, we started talking about different ways to design a building, and making a narrative out of that. With the working group, we took all of that information, brought it to the working group, and then we started talking to them about, well, we spoke to them about the list of op-com explorations, but then we also talked to them about the sites that we're looking at, and any of the perceived constraints that we have on those sites, we're looking, continuing to look at some of the other legal information that we're trying to derive from each of those sites. And some of the work that we did yesterday, was it only yesterday? We developed, we started to develop the score sheet for the evaluation of the options, and that is ongoing work, and so I don't have that to present to you, but we are working on that, and it'll take us a couple of meetings to get through that entire score sheet. But some of the site constraints that we looked at was, we have the East Gloucester site, we looked at some of the buttons, some of the setbacks there, the topography, the access to the site, we began to speak about how one moves in and out, and how to make improvements to that site, we looked at the constraints of the Veterans Memorial site, the topography here on this site, where you're up on the hill here, and you only have a narrow entrance into the site, is also a challenge, we also understand that the ball field is open public space at the moment, or play space for the fields, and of course the location next to the highway. And then we looked at the Green Street site, and again, we have some entrance into the site constraints, we have a large open space here, but we also have some different constraints about providing access to the site. So, the site plans are things that we're continuing to look at at this moment, and that work will continue over the course of the next few months. Other work to date was the school building committee meetings, we brought all of that work to the school building committee, and then we also have discussed our goals for sustainability, which is very important here in Gloucester, we know that you have a sustainability program, we looked at gaining the extra two percentage points from the MSBA by exceeding the mass energy code by 20%, and we're looking to achieve the V-force silver, which we'll continue to talk about in the next few weeks, and as we begin to talk about the design programs. At that most recent meeting, we also presented the existing conditions of the East Gloucester School, so our consultants have been out to both Veterans Memorial and the East Gloucester School, and they have done their existing condition studies, and submitted their reports, so we have, I'm only going to take you through the East Gloucester School, because there's a lot of information with that, so we looked at building envelope, architectural elements, structural, mechanical, electrical, site, civil, technology, security, food and food services, we looked at co-compliance, accessibility, and we looked at the functional use of the building. Covered a lot with every one of our consultants, and some of the main factors that came out, oh, sorry, was that since we were back here four years ago when we did our master plan, not a lot has changed in this building. We're going to take you through a few highlights of that, but I wanted to focus a little bit on the functional use of the building, because that plays into how you're using the schools right now. So, this is what we looked at, we took the existing gross score footage of the building, and compared it to what the MSBA would say for the existing enrollment, so you have a building that's 26,854 square feet, you have a current enrollment of 210 students, which actually, according to the MSBA, you should have a building of 37,800 square feet. Or you could look at it in reverse and say, if you had this size building, you could fit those many students, 149 students in the same building. Currently, the MSBA is looking at your school projections of being 230 students, previously when we heard, four years ago, they were projected to be 245, and then more recently at 236, but now the MSBA is saying 230, so they keep updating their enrollment projections. Regardless of that, you only have room for 149 students, and that is if you include the square footage of the auditorium, which we'll talk about in a moment. Veterans is a similar situation, you have 31,543 square feet, and that would equal about 175 students if you were to do the math with the MSBA, or you could look at the current enrollment and say, you have 217 students, you would need about 39,000 square feet. So, that's one way of measuring your functional use of the building, and the other way is taking a look at each of the existing spaces. So, if you were to look at this and think about the red spaces as being undersized for their functional use, according to the MSBA guidelines, you would see all of the core academic spaces in the East Gloucester School, with the exception of one grade, one classroom, are undersized for various, and modulars, which we don't really count because they're temporary. The space that is green, called the multipurpose, that is the right size for a cafeteria, but half the size, no, yeah, half the size of a gymnasium, it's currently serving the function for both, so you could either say you don't have a gymnasium at all, or you have one that's half the size. And then this green space here, which is the auditorium, that the MSBA looks at as an additional space that you don't need, so it doesn't matter, it could be big or small or whatever, it would be green in this case because the MSBA doesn't look at elementary schools needing an auditorium. The other piece here to look at is your administration space, according to the MSBA, that's one-fifth the size that it would need to be for the number of students that you're serving, and all of your special education spaces are undersized. Veterans, almost similar situation, you have a few classrooms, the yellows shows that they're about right size, or a little bit over, so you have a few classrooms there that are a right-sized classroom, again, you have this multipurpose space, we're looking at it as green as being cafeteria, but they're about half the size of a gymnasium, there is no art room in this building, you have your administration's about a quarter the size of the MSBA guidelines, you have several, several of your special education spaces are undersized in this building as well. So, you can see there's a need, I don't think we can deny that there's a need for space in both buildings. When we talk about co-compliance and updating or renovating any of these buildings, we also, and the cost of doing those things, we actually have to talk about the triggers. So, you could say, I could go in and add a little bit of space, and maybe that's going to be okay, but we have this problem that if you add a little bit of space, you're going to automatically trigger the fire protection system in the Gloucester building, because anything that exceeds 75 square feet needs to have an automatic fire sprinkler system, East Gloucester does not. So, the moment you talk about an addition to that building, you've triggered that one. If you renovate about half the building, you're going to trigger the seismic issue, which means you now have to go in and pin all your walls, the ceilings, and the floors, and type structural trigger that you've met, and just about anything that you do is going to also trigger the handicap accessibility, and that's one that we do want to pay attention to. There's several spaces within that building which are not accessible, we're going to talk about a few of those. Some of them are access to the doors and ramps to the outside, actually getting from the parking to the front door, some of them are conditions like this, where you can't, this is an exit door, and you just come outside and jump. I don't know, you know, just like that. You have bathrooms that don't meet the AEA, and this one here is actually in the nurse's office, so again, this is an important one that really should be handicap accessible. You do provide accessibility in some of the other bathrooms, but again, when you start looking at them very closely, they're not meeting the AEA requirements for children. We have other issues, we're doors, stairs, ramps, we talked about the auditorium a little bit, because I know that that is a jewel to the community, but again, if we start looking at that space, it is not handicap accessible, the entire floor would have to be redone, the slope is too aggressive, there's no way to get people in and out of this building, so you have a steep slugged floor that then leads to a very steep ramp, which leads to an exit door which actually goes to the administration office. So, we have a few problems in that space, and then we have things like, you know, railings and things like that, which might be easier to fix than some of the other problems, but we have an overhaul of handicap issues with. But we have an overhaul of handicap issues within that building as soon as we begin to touch things. Some of the other things that we've done since we started the project is we've did a presentation to both the PTOs. We met with the East Gloucester PTO. We had several parents come out for that project, to that site. And then we met at Veterans Memorial, and we had several parents come out there too. So we were able to show them a portion of this presentation, walk them through what we thought we would be doing so that they're staying in the loop. We are meeting with you here tonight, and we'll be at city council on March 26th. And then we have some upcoming building committee meetings on April 4th and the 23rd. And we're going to continue to move forward and keep the public aware of all our upcoming building meetings. So when we talk about that, we'll talk about the schedule. So again, we're looking at feasibility and schematic design, which we've been approved to go forward with. And then in the spring of 2020, there'll be a vote about moving forward with whatever project we put in front of it. So when we talk about feasibility, it's actually two parts. We're still in this very early phase over here. It's called preliminary design program. And we're looking to wrap that up in June. We submit to the MSBA. We move into the preferred schematic design. So when I talk about options and those 10 or 11 options, those are all here in this bucket. In the next phase, we try to make the 10 to four or five. So we're going from many to the few, then you get to schematic and you're down to the one. And when we move into schematic, we're presenting to the community the project that we want them to vote on to go forward. And if all of that moves according to schedule, you would then move into design development, construction drawings. And again, on this particular path, you'd be going up to kid around 2020, and construction can begin around 2020 for whatever project you would be looking at, whether that be renovation, the project new school, any of that could begin around that time. And then if all of that happens, you could complete your project by February or in September of 2023. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. In the beginning, one of the first slides were where you've developed a schematic, what you call it, of rooms you would want. You said you added extra special ed rooms and things like that. Have there been conversations with, say, West Parish staff or other communities that recently built schools to find out if they would have done things differently? Were those kind of conversations brought into the decision to?
So I want to clarify something. We didn't add extra special education. We took the special education programs that you currently have and provided the space for them that you need. So we're not looking at adding new programs. We're looking at supporting the programs that you already have.
Okay, I thought you said that there was extra something for the special ed. And I'm not questioning that. I'm just questioning.
Space over what you have now.
Okay.
So instead of working in the hallway, I think I showed one picture where the kids were working in the hallway. That's not actually, you know, those kinds of pull-out spaces are not appropriate. So they're built in now into the space program.
Okay, but regardless, it was that slide. But have there been conversations to determine, maybe learning from the past, if those are the right decisions?
So our conversations are with the leadership group, and that would include Dr. Sapphire and the principals from both of those schools. So it's combining the leadership from this community to determine what those needs are.
Okay.
Members of the leadership group visited schools that have been recently built. And it was actually very informative to learn from what challenges they had and what they would have done different. A couple of schools are four or five years out. And there was one school that was about four or five years out, and they've already had to change the configuration of their school several times because they didn't think ahead or make the plans. So yes, we have had those conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Great. When you talked about that MSBA doesn't, doesn't. So do they not give you credit for the specialty rooms, art, music?
What do you mean by give you credit?
On the reimbursement?
No, all of those are included.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. So, because it sounded like when you talked to those, that they just did the core academic rooms.
No, no, everything in their spreadsheet is included in your reimbursement.
Everything?
Well, it's a reimbursable, we have to have a whole learning segment on it. It was reimbursable. So that's the starting point. So it is all considered part of your project, right? So it's all included. It's not like they say we're not paying for art or music.
Right. They're not saying, those are a luxury, you know, like an auditorium.
No, 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 no. Those, no, auditoriums, yes. Art and music are core curriculum programs.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Now, spent, do they give you, is there a percentage of spent space they give you, or is it your needs?
It's to meet your needs. So special education is an area where the MSBA says we are allowing you to meet your needs. And so you take your special education program and you submit it to the Department of Special Education, and they look at it and say, yes, we agree that you need these spaces to meet those programs.
And they have, what, 18 children to a classroom? Is that their formula or?
No, that's a kindergarten formula. So when the MSBA does their formulas for their classrooms, and which is one of the reasons why there's that discrepancy, they're actually just counting heads rather than groups of children. So they count, they base it on 18 children for a kindergarten classroom and 23 children for a general classroom. And then they give you the number of classrooms that that math works out to. That math doesn't always work out for what your needs are as a group because that math would actually work out that you have 73.333 children in one grade level. And so you would have the needs for 3.25 classrooms. You're going to go to four classrooms, right? So the MSBA, that recipe formula, when you plug in the numbers and it spits out another number, it doesn't care where the kids are. But you as a, you as a community do. So that's why we have an extra classroom, or three extra classrooms, because we're looking at full classroom.
Right. And actually, at West Parish, they gave us a little leeway on that, didn't they?
They do. So you just, you have to present to them while you have that need, which is doing that kind of math.
And LEED, what's the LEED rating at West Parish? Is that a?
West Parish, did we get gold? We got gold.
Gold, okay.
So LEED has had several changes over the past few years. It's hard and hard to get Silver. So our goal is LEED V4 Silver, which would be great. And then really, it's the two percentage points that you're looking for too, so that you get the extra money for the energy code.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
And good luck at city council.
I put on the agenda incorrectly that we needed to approve the educational goals. But those, as Michelle explained, they are ongoing. And even yesterday, at yesterday's working meeting, we actually added a couple, one which was consolidation, which hadn't been on.
Right. So at the end of the program, before we submit to MSBA, this group will be asked to approve this.
The guiding, yeah.
The entire package, actually. So all of the guiding principles, the space summary, the options that we developed.
Do you wait till the end for all of them?
This presentation is not in the packet, but it will be available tomorrow morning. We will send it out. And the guiding principles are in there. And if you have any input, if you think there's something in there that's overlooked or something that's not in there that's overlooked, then just talk to the building, talk to me, talk to Kathy, talk to anybody in the building, we'll keep checking.
For a while, it's still a living document. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to, it's a rare occasion, but secondary.
Well, hang on, that was a presentation.
That was a presentation.
This is a report.
This is a report. The superintendent's report is.
Because we have a brief PowerPoint coming with your permission. I'll speak from here. Item number one is the aforementioned Cape May College and Career Fair that is taking place again tomorrow, March 14th, from 5:30 to 7:30, where students and parents will have an opportunity to meet with and discuss upwards of close to between 70 and 80 different colleges and universities to get more information as they begin to hone what their college choices or the applications are going to be. The first fair was held five years ago, May 20th, 2015. So this really has become a tradition. And the Chamber of Commerce has really spearheaded it. We thank them for their efforts. Item number two, in previous meetings, we've discussed the district improvement plan. One of the elements, the very fundamental elements of the improvement plan has to do with the ongoing review of curriculum. And the district improvement plan states that the district will continue its cyclic work on the development and the revision of curriculum guides, the overarching goal being to maintain an ongoing five-year cycle of large-scale curriculum review. I only bring this up so that over time, you have a sense that these things are actually taking place. So for example, the English language arts at the elementary level, the upcoming review dates have already been established for May 29th through Friday, May 31st, as well as on June 3rd, that we will be setting similar types of dates for math. And I received a report today, the assistant superintendent was over at the high school, and they're mapping out the work they're going to be doing on their curriculum using the lens of what's referred to as understanding by design. So this is just a way for reminding the school committee, this is what we said we're going to do, and in fact, it's unfolding and happening. Item number three, leadership team met last Thursday and had a very interesting conversation about the concept of resilience, obviously resilience in our students. We've got a lot of programs to try to help students withstand adversity in their lives. The trauma sensitivity of veterans, the PBIS programs, our second step programs, focusing in on avoiding and prohibiting the potential for dating violence and domestic violence at the high school and all the rest. But in many respects, these are pieces to a larger puzzle. And so we've just begun a conversation about the issue of resilience, which can be defined as an individual characteristic, can be defined as a process, and sometimes can be defined as an outcome. So we kind of want to get a further handle on what this whole concept of resilience is all about. It also ties into the work that Greg and others have been doing through the ECLC, the Essex County Learning Community. I called it collaborative earlier today when we're looking at issues such as student engagement and tiered intervention systems, particularly in the social-emotional realm, as well as increasing our sense of cultural sensitivity. So it's an exploration, something that we're really interested in thinking about and trying to create a more holistic and systematic approach to helping our students face adversity and with a stronger sense of capabilities. One of the articles that we're reading for our next meeting talks about the essential ingredient of having a strong, at least one strong interpersonal relationship somewhere out there as the basis for fostering resilience, combined with dealing with certain environmental factors, both positive and negative. So it's a broad topic, but one that we hope to sculpt and craft for our own use.
Where is that article from? It sounds interesting.
It's Harvard's.
Is it something you can send out or is it in the books already?
Absolutely, I can send it out tonight. It's interesting, very interesting.
You have a flip hand, right?
I think I do, yes. It's called "Supportive Relationships and Active Skill Building: Strengthen the Foundations of Resilience", the National Scientific Council on the Developing Child, and Center on the Developing Child, Harvard University, 2015.
So what was the one that you talked about having that special relationship in?
It's, well, that's.
Three of them?
It's one out of the.
Oh, that's one article.
Yeah, it's just one article.
I thought it was three separate ones.
We'll send along more. It's interesting. I'll send it out tonight or tomorrow. English language, I had also reported out on the Department of Ed coming up with some reclassification procedures and language surveys. This is just a follow-up to say that we are in fact making those adjustments to our English language program. There's two elements. One, as I mentioned, is the home language survey and what it can help to do in terms of understanding the child, the background, the family, and what the most effective programming is going to be for that child. And the state has also issued regulations regarding reclassification and the placement of an English language learner student after we review assessment data, classwork, collaboration with the students, teachers, and all the rest. So this is just, this is a report saying that we've received the information from the Department of Ed and we're in the process of making and adjusting our changes in order to better serve our English language learners. Item number five, a reminder that the school bus audio and video cameras are online, ready to go. Notices have been sent out. Posters are on the buses. We'll have an insert into each level's student handbooks by the end of the week. And by Monday, we will be off and running. There's been, I've received no feedback, absolutely no feedback one way or another. One letter was sent out. I didn't quite see the need to send another, but we're good to go. Notice school improvement plans, which the school committee will have an opportunity to review. We have discussed that. They will be due to us for review just prior to April vacation. And we'll begin the process of scheduling for the school committee's review as well. Particularly, well, in all levels, but at the elementary level in particular, there are a number of fundamental topics and themes that they take from the district improvement plan. And each school also has at least one specific, unique item or goal for their particular school as well. And so this gives the principals a chance. Sometimes they're a little bit reluctant because the other schools have already told you what we're doing. But it's still, I think, important for them to come before you. You may have some questions. It's a little chance for some conversation. And they can also talk about the unique aspects to their respective school improvement plans as well. And the last item, if I may, is once again, the Mary Poppins is playing again this weekend at the middle school. You should go. It's absolutely terrific. And mamma mia, the high school production is April 4th through the 6th.
Any questions of the superintendent?
And will we set the superintendent's report?
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? And we will move on to, no, subcommittee reports, no, no subcommittee reports. And as I said earlier, we do not need to approve the guiding principles of design for East Gloucester building project because as I said, they're still being worked on. And, but if they were included.
Yeah, but they're not the ones that were up there. They're different.
Well, as I said, they've added a couple. So we'll get an updated version back tomorrow. And if you have any important things that we should. You guys still connected?
Michelle?
Oh, Michelle.
That's next.
So. HDMI 4?
So we will just.
Thank you.
And now, as you know, we will be having a public hearing on our budget as we're required to do. And tonight, we need to pass a budget that can be published for that people to weigh in at the public hearing. So we will go through the presentation from the administration. We will then discuss the options that we had looked at at our workshop last week. And we will vote a budget for publication for the public hearing.
I'll kick it off, and then I'll turn over the calendar to discuss the options. So you've seen most of this before. There are three different options with respect to the additional requests, some of which we've itemized as recommendations. But again, obviously, it's at the, it's at the will of the school community as to what, and how they wish to go forward for the public hearing. You can see that the level service budget, the proposed increase is 1.433, 317. And at present, without any additional requests, the increase to the budget from this year's FY '19 is 3.42%. For the audience that's here, some of the significant cost adjustments to the budget leading to that 1.4 include a base, a salary increase built into the base. There is a step as teachers go from step five to step six. There's a salary increase. The lane change is from bachelor's to master's to masters plus 30 to master's. The lane change is from bachelor's to master's to masters plus thirty to masters plus sixty. Those are also accompanied by an increase in salary. We lost a grant that formally provided about sixty-nine thousand dollars for salaries for nurses. That money from the state has been converted into a competitive grant, which we have applied for, which could provide us with an in-house suspension program at the high school, but that is totally independent of the former use of those monies. We currently have moved the food service salary for the food service director into the general fund at eighty-two thousand. Health insurance, the GIC did announce its rates on February the twenty-eighth. Gary has had an opportunity to look at the different plans, and how many people, and what percentage, and the extent to which each of those particular plans are for next year. And we originally budgeted around seven or seven point three percent, and that's where we are, where we do not anticipate any savings from health insurance. The added district tuition...
Do you want to take questions as we go?
Of course.
If you can finish this slide, and then I'll ask questions.
Already. We have some students who are graduating out and moving on, so we do see some savings with respect to added district tuition to the tune of a hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars.
So I have two questions. On the health insurance, how did you come up with that figure? Gary?
I took seven point three percent of the current budget in FY nineteen for health insurance. And then I looked at, when the rates came out, I looked at a download of all our staff members and what plans they selected, and looked at the increases per plan, and came out with around seven percent. And so it pretty much equaled what we budgeted.
So I looked at that last night, too. I did some math on it, and I would think we'd have to go a little bit higher than seven because a hundred sixteen people are on the always, which is the twelve percent. So I would just want to look at that again, maybe?
Sure. We're also going to look at it again...
After they move, after they open enrollment?
After opening enrollments. So that's another look that we'll have, and then we'll adjust accordingly.
Okay. I just think that's going to end up being a little higher, that's all.
You're talking to your higher?
Yeah.
My numbers, too.
And then on the food service salary, I understand that it's a move into the general budget, but it was originally in the food service budget. So why is it in addition to our budget even though we've been paying it all along?
Yeah, it was paid out of the revolving fund. And so when we move it to the general fund, our budget that we presented, the one point four million dollar increase, that's the general fund that we're looking at. So when we take something from a revolving fund and move it to the general fund, that's an increase.
But there's a reduction because we have the revolving...
Revolving funds aren't in our budget.
Revolving is...
They're separate. In your budget, you go with age.
No, no, I get that, I guess it's just the process I didn't understand. So then we're going to have extra money in the food service revolving account, is what I'm assuming, since we're taking the eighty-two out? I know we'd struggle in that.
Yeah. We have a very small fund balance in that revolving fund. And so right now, we're breaking even. And so we need to really look at it carefully, monitor it. And as you know, we have negotiations that is upcoming for the food service, so that will have an impact.
So that any residual left in the revolving fund we could use for the salary increase for the food service, so then we won't be adding to the regular budget then?
Yeah, we have to wait till all the balls drop, and then we can look at it.
Yeah, just to clarify that a little bit more, we also subsidize the food service by all the health benefits, which is significant. More than eighty-two thousand dollars comes out of the general fund. So food service is not a break even. It's, you know, we're a community that has to, you know, we do have a fair amount of free and reduced lunch that we get reimbursed with, but it still doesn't quite cover it.
No, I understand, I was just confused with the...
It was trying to keep the revolving fund a little healthier. If it has to go back, it goes back. But also, just to get, I did some percentages on the plans, and seventy-three percent of the employees have plans that go from six point one to twelve point one percent increase, and sixty percent of the employees go from seven point one to twelve point one increase. So we're, you know, very heavily on the top end, you know. Very few people are in the zero increase ones.
Which is why I asked about that number again. Okay.
Just for those who may not understand that, Gloucester not belongs to the GIC, which is the state program, and within that program, here are a number of optional health insurance plans that they can choose into. We're in the open enrollment period, so although we're trying to budget, we really don't know until they actually, they, most of them keep the plans that they already have, but a lot of times, this is an opportunity to change, and this is when they can. So we don't really know. This number will get adjusted every time we do the budget. We will be voting the budget tonight, we'll be voting it after the public hearing, and then it'll go to the administration. And then the city will look at the budget, and they will vote a budget. And we will come back and reconcile our budget with what we are given by the city. That's the way it works. So we will vote the budget two more times after tonight, and that number will change probably every one of those times.
Thank you. As we continue to look at the cost adjustments to the budget, added district transportation, we're looking at a reduction of almost thirty-four thousand dollars, again, due to some of the students that are graduating and or aging out. An increase to the budget for our elementary science curriculum at eighty-eight thousand dollars. Technology, we spoke at length at both the subcommittee meetings and when we presented the budget last time, that we will be leasing Chromebooks, it's a little bit more cost-effective, and a little bit more of a cushion going into the FY twenty, subtracting savings for retirements, and that brings us to one point four three three million dollars. In addition, and we're going to present some options, we had spoken at the building finance and/or at the school committee meeting about the district's recommendations. Again, the school committee will be voting tonight on a budget for a public hearing. Last time we spoke, we recommended the English language powers. We're in the process of negotiating with AmeriCor for interns for the EL powers at both O'Malley and at Veterans, which would have a cost of eight thousand five hundred dollars each, as opposed to a full-fledged education support professional, thirty-eight thousand dollars with salary and health insurance. Beeman, we spoke with the director of special education, she met with the committee as well, and feels justified in bringing forward the special education power at Beeman. And also, the reading specialist, there are a number of students coming up into the middle school with learning disabilities who need reading service. And so at the high school, she is recommending a reading specialist either as a hire or as a possible contracted service, depending upon the future of what we need to do to get to the budget figure when the time comes. Option B includes those. In addition, we spoke about the need for a point six O'Malley teacher to help both, to mitigate the work that the librarian is doing with respect to specials, to keep the specials, their class sizes at reasonable numbers. So we put that at the top of the list with option B. The Gloucester High School is interested in an EL coordinator as well. That would possibly bring us a third individual from AmeriCor, but we're not overly optimistic that's going to happen. If we were to bring a point five EL coordinator onboard, that would be a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars. We have spoken about the math coach situation. In reality, bringing a point two means that from three schools, we'd be moving the coaches over to two schools, leaving one in Lurch. So you, we would be in a position where we would have to find or hire either a half-time math coach, if such a thing exists, or a full-time math coach in order to cover the entire district. And at the high school, they're also asking for a library aide to assist the media specialist at the library as well. So between, option B would include the previous slide plus these additional requests, so that would come at a cost of two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars above the one point four three three, which was the original level service budget. And then option C...
Just to be clear, just to clarify these last thing, what you're saying is that although if it was possible to hire a point two teacher, the cost would be sixteen, but the reality is it'd probably be more like a point five.
At a minimum.
At a minimum. So it would be more than that, right?
And then again, I want to clarify some conversation. A math coach is mostly working with teachers, not with students. So there's an argument to be made, if we were to be able to spend money, do we go with a math interventionist, or do we go with a math coach in order to create a little bit more time to work on the data analysis? They're all important things, they're all essential things. The option C would raise the increase to three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars, if we were to add the alternative to suspension. Again, I mentioned before, we're waiting for a possible grant for an in-house suspension staff member. We're also allocating ten thousand dollars for what's referred to as a PASS program. I don't know exactly what that stands for, but parents can transport students to a facility in Beverly, which deals with students and works through their issues, and there's all sorts of mental health services provided as well. And so, in fact, I'm reviewing a memorandum of agreement and preparing to send out a letter of intent to sign the MOA by the end of this week. So we have a number of options, the grant, the PASS, and very possibly the alternative to suspension, the thirty-eight thousand dollars would be for a paraprofessional. And then last, Plumco has requested a special education teacher. Our director of special ed had spoke about that in detail at our last meeting, and so that's why we have positioned that position in this place in terms of options A, B, and C. To provide some detail as to the implications for the budget that the school committee is looking to pass for public hearing, we have a potential budget figure from the city and its relationship to the three options. You also have this in its, on one page, on the spreadsheet that we handed out. And Gary, could we sub...
Sure, you can be too. So as Dr. Sapphire talked about, we have three options for your consideration, and then there's, you can pick and choose. Option A adds a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the one point four three three million dollar increase, and that would be a three point seven four percent increase to the budget. Option B adds the two hundred and fifty-four thousand, which comes to a four point oh two percent. And then finally, option C, which would be all the staff that is requested, a lot of principals and directors, would add up to an additional three hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars or a four point two two percent increase.
Gary, excuse me, just for a moment, these three categories are just ways in which we logically have put things together. You may obviously choose to take them out of order, you may create hybrids, it was just a way for us to have an organizing principle as we presented it to the school committee.
Right, there's infinite possibilities here of adding and subtracting from these three categories. Now, we did provide different levels of potential city funding, from two point two five percent all the way up to three point five percent. So depending upon how much the city provides, then it would take for us to balance the budget some budget reductions. For example, if the city provided three percent city funding for our budget, that would amount to one million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Under option A, that would necessitate three hundred and ten thousand dollars of budget reductions to balance the budget. So if we went to the three point five percent increase that the city was providing that, we would have thirty-five thousand dollars of a budget surplus without any additional staff. Adding additional staff, let's say option B, would require two hundred and nineteen thousand, for example, of budget reductions to balance the budget. So if we go to this handout that we provided for you, lays out the three options, and then as Dr. Sapphire mentioned, you can mix and match. But for discussion purposes, option A, the total budget increase is one point five six eight million, or three point seven four percent. And that, that provides the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of additional staff for option A. And option B, you can see, the total budget with the two hundred and fifty-four thousand adds up to one point six eight seven million dollars. So depending upon how much additional staff you want to add to the budget, the budget increase will increase accordingly. So let me stop here, and if there's any questions or any debate discussion that you want to have, we can provide some clarification or answer your questions.
Just to, I think the way we will proceed with this is that we will first take a motion to vote the budget, the level service budget, and we'll vote that, and then we'll take up each individual item separately and vote that, and then if anybody wants to add something that's not on there, we'll take that out. Okay, so we'll do...
No, we have to make the motion out.
Yeah, well, I understand this, is there any, but before we start there, if there's any questions, Gary, enjoy.
So to make sure I understand, on the previous slide, you talked about the significant cost adjustments. Base increase, that's when a contract gets negotiated, and they have X percent raise per year, whereas the contracts we settled in the last two years have had impact on FY eighteen, nineteen, twenty. That five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars is just a percentage increase to their base salary based on contracts that were settled.
Right. So we provided a cost of living increase, and then we've added the, as teachers gain more experience, we've added the step increase, and then the lane changes.
Right, but that five sixty-seven number is just a percentage increase based on the settled contracts.
Potentially.
No, it's based on the settled contracts and the unsettled contracts, giving money to negotiate.
A cost of living increases added to the unsettled contracts.
Any other questions before we start?
What's the percentage use for cost of living increase?
Two percent, which is historical, based on historical trends.
I was just going to make a comment on the presentation.
Okay.
The, when the superintendent talked about the technology, he said the increase was really isn't due to Chromebooks, because they, we've been budgeting for them every year. So we budgeted one last year, there's still no level service. What the technology increases really are is more safety-related. It's for the voiceover IT, that's a big nut. So eighty percent of it is all safety-related cameras, you know, both the expense and the support for that. There's also support for the door access panels and purchase of them. So it's about eighty percent of that hundred thousand dollar technology increase is about safety items. I just wanted to make sure that was, because the Chromebooks have been, you know, we've been maintaining those every year because of our commitment, well, because of the, you have to, there is no choice today.
So just to be clear, the... So just to be clear, the, some of those safety items that are included in the technology increase will give us the capacity for every teacher in every classroom to be able to use their cellphone to call 911, which is, does not exist today.
Or not a phone in the classroom.
There's a phone in the classroom. In the classroom.
Yeah, not the cellphone, but a phone.
But there's also the capacity that, the.
Some places, but this is actually a phone that's hooked up to the internet in the building.
So we, I will entertain a motion that as a starting point, we vote, I need to tote the number here. The, yeah, the, we vote a budget totaling $43,000, $322,000, $242,000.
Exactly.
I move that we approve the fiscal '20 draft budget in the amount of, the number just said 43, 372, 240.
Second.
Second, okay, is there a discussion? This is essentially the level service budget.
Give or take.
Give or take. As I said, this is a work in progress, this is, we are, this will change as we get more information, it will change as we hear from the public. And it definitely will change when we hear from the administration. So is there any discussion on the motion?
So the idea being that you want these options offering amendments to this motion?
Yeah, well, we will then amend the, the budget number, will increase the budget number by 70%.
So then would like, then would like to.
We'll vote each one.
Well, what if someone just jumped to option C?
Well, we can vote that, I mean, if somebody makes a motion. But what I would, what I would like to entertain is that we vote each, each of the line items within the option A, and then we'll go move on to the option B and option C. So that each trend can be discussed. Okay.
I, catching Joel, I mean, we could save time by just doing it by options.
All right, we can do it that way. But I'm just saying, we'll vote, we're, we're, right now, we're voting the base budget, and then we're gonna add to that.
We need to amend before we vote, right? So you have to vote on the base budget on its own, or if this voted approved the budget for public hearing, right?
No, we can, we can add to it.
Yeah.
Am I sure?
Well, I don't know, I don't think we were doing this before. I thought last time we just talked about all the options and voted at the same time.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it easy so that, you know, so that we can, we can incrementally add to this number.
So I'll just start, right?
Well, we got, we got a motion before us to.
Right, I'm gonna move to just amend the motion. I'm gonna move to amend the motion that we add option C. I heard needs not wants, it was all, you know, things facilitating the progress that it had made when they came in the budget workshop, remember the last meeting, the principals came in and talked about their requests. I didn't hear any luxury items come through, and I think this is the starting point for our budget. We should put what we need in the budget, and then if we have to, you know, remove later, at least show, you know, what we needed to start with.
I'll second that discussion. I second the, the discussion. Are you mean, do you mean to say that you're including all of them, A, B, and C?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, okay, that's what I.
Option C includes, I'm voting A and B.
Okay.
Yeah, the full 4.22, 335.5 extra to the 43 number that we started with.
So what's the new number after adding all the options?
Well, we'll vote the, we'll vote the amendment.
Yeah, I do, I do have that. If you add option C to the base of 43 million, the number is 43,707,714.
That'll be.
I'm sorry.
That might A and B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, do you have?
A.
I just want the numbers.
He wants.
Come on, you're doing.
Okay, I'm sorry. Option A, the total is 43,507,214. Option B is 43,626,214.
Thank you.
So we have, we have a motion before us, and we have a motion to amend the motion. And the motion for the amendment is to add option C.
Which is all A, B, and C.
Which is all A, yeah, option C includes A, B, and C. And it was, you seconded that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so Michelle, is discussion.
So can I actually ask a question on one of the line items that we're trying to vote?
Sure.
So under option B, umeli teacher, the librarian you said is covering specialist, so can you please tell me how that actually ended up happening?
I can't, because it happened under the radar. We had asked for cuts last year, I received the recommendations from the middle school, from the middle school principal in particular. And there was no clue, no witness, no information brought forward that this was part of that equation.
All right, no school administration or previous?
Previous.
Okay.
Any question?
Who, Michelle, Melissa?
Um, that's good. So from this budget, I think I want to hear from the superintendent, is this, is this the budget that you would want us to vote? I want to hear more from administration, yeah?
Well, it's a, it's a tall order. I mean, there's, there's the, there's the symbolic aspect of saying at public hearing, this is what we need, right? And we need to be as clear as possible to the administration that as Mr. Fazza said, these are not wants, these are absolute needs. At the same time, we identify and recognize the fact that there's a certain amount of fiscal responsibility and reality that the city is going to be confronting as it builds its entire budget. So if the school committee is interested in showing what our actual needs are going into the FY '20, then option C for the public hearing makes sense. But, you know, it's a 4.22% increase, and I don't think that's a realistic figure. But in terms of expressing what the needs are for the district, then it, it's justified for public hearing.
Yeah. To address a couple of the line items on here. My recall from special education director is that she was not supportive of this Plum Cove addition.
That's correct, she gave us some very clear data that there are adequate service hours based upon what she anticipates for student needs next year.
Right, so that's number one, that if it's not needed and not supported by the program lead, then my, I would suggest it doesn't stay in there. Which is why I was asking him what he recommends. But, yeah. Well, I didn't get to finish after I spoke to her, so. And the second piece is if we do not think this math coach, symbolically, we know we need more support for math, but if the 16,000 doesn't really get us anything, like you can't hire a point two human being, I don't know if there's a stipend or a consultant or whatever that fills it, but I, so it would be a placeholder of money, but I'm not sure you'd be able to accomplish what you're going to. So, so that should either be increased to the number you want it to be, whether it's possible halftime. It should either be all, you know, halftime or zero.
Joel?
So I, you know, putting this forward again, I think that's a great point about making sure these really aren't the needs that's expressed. But I learned last night at the city council meeting, the city's gonna give another 4% increase to the tech in our payments, so if, you know, if the city's put that up for one school district refund, you know, maybe it's parried.
You go tell the people at the tech that you don't want their kids going there.
I think the issue is the percent increase.
Well.
Not the yes or no, but.
The school committee go to the tech the first place, when Melissa texted her, didn't even want to go to the tech, and she wanted us to, or the cost of high school, so let's not go there.
All I'm saying is, is a tall order. It's a tall order, looking historically at what this district has been able to receive, you know, within, within previous budgets. But it's, you know, not out of line with, you know, at least one other district that the city participates in, which again, is gonna go up over 4% next year. So I, you know, again, I don't.
Which, we're not taking it from the school side, we're gonna have the city side.
I don't expect that this goes through like this, but again, I don't think we're out of line saying, hey, this is what we need to run this district properly without any extra bells and whistles. And if it doesn't come in, it doesn't come in.
Melissa?
So I wanna go back to my question, because, I mean, I've heard the needs from the different department heads that come forward, I've attended enough finance meetings to hear what the discussions are. I'm not the expert in all this, that's why I'm asking from you as an administrator that leads this district. You just told me that you supported C, but now we're hearing that you may not, so I wanna know.
I supported C from one perspective, and that's the symbolic perspective. That's different than if you're asking me practically. And we have prioritized this, and, you know, we, we feel that option A is potentially realistic because it, it still brings us into 3.74, and that's still gonna be a challenge. So it depends on the point of, on the perspective that, you know, you want the response.
I was trying to look up your goals, I couldn't find them in all the agendas, I thought it was around February something, but one of your goals, you gave a percentage in an increase to something, did it have to do with math? I couldn't find your goals, I apologize, I was looking real long.
Well, there was this student learning goal in ELA and math.
So.
The, the growth percentile.
So to the math coach piece, I know we can't hire a point two. But I've, I've heard strongly from administration and yourself that math coaches or math intervention, either one, could be of a need in this district, so maybe a point two isn't a need, but a point five maybe, or a point one. Are you comfortable, before we take this vote, if we're taking math off the table, you have a goal that says you're gonna increase math, is this something you feel comfortable with? And I don't know the answer to that, I'm trying to draw a view.
Just to be clear, in this motion before, in the amendment before us, that is included?
It is.
Point two is included.
But I'm hearing conversation that that may change, so I'm trying to figure out how I'm gonna vote if we vote this and that gets taken out. That's what this is all about. So I just wanna make sure, because we're evaluating you, you gave us a goal with a figure.
It's pretty hard to district.
Just.
Just me, but I understand.
I evaluate you, I don't evaluate the rest of the district.
Yep, all right, fine.
Now, I don't mean that to be sarcastic, but I have to ask you, is this, if we don't add a math coach, if we're taking that off the table right now, if that could potentially happen, are you comfortable with that?
So.
Point two.
What is it? I mean, the health insurance figure isn't correct, so maybe the point two wouldn't be correct either, but before we take it.
Health insurance, no.
Right, so I just wanna make sure before we make a decision. If we take it out, if this ends up being a conversation where we don't support the math coach, I need to know that you're comfortable with that.
Would you like my thoughts? Yes? I praise more highly the work that our two math coaches currently do. I've seen their work over and over again with students, with the administration, with the math leadership team, they do incredible work. I think that it's very high value, I think it's a great return on, on the money, and I think it has helped us move forward. So I would strongly encourage that we have additional math coaching. As Dr. Sapphire said, there are a lot of things that, in this budget, that are considered essential. And I think Mr. Fazza is correct in, in identifying this budget as a, as a, these are needs, not, not extras and wants, so this is the hard part. The answer to your question is, I think it's important, I think it will move us forward, and I admire the work they're doing, and I'd like to see more of it for all, all students. But, you know, every one of these things is, is critical. I would say that if you're going to do anything and you want to identify what we need, that having a point two is probably not a realistic number, and I would put it to point five if you want to do anything at all.
Wasn't you, a couple of years ago, gave a presentation, I believe we were at the City Hall Auditorium when you gave it, we were talking about, and I think could be, remember, it could be a little foggy, it was grade four, that math skills dipped drastically, and we were trying to figure out why. Do you know if we've overcome that? I don't recall having that conversation since, but I know there was a.
Well, I think.
Dipped in some of the schools at fourth grade for some reason, and we were trying to figure out if there was a certain cause for it, or for something that fixed itself.
What I, what I can say is that I think I shared some really encouraging data from our elementary schools, both in ELA and Massachusetts, that have had those kinds of increases over the last five years. And so I would say, overall, both our core programs have done really great work and are responsible for moving us to, you know, I can't say it often enough, especially on TV, you know, we have three buildings in the 70th and high 70th percentile of our elementary schools, 70th and 78th percentile in the state. We have, all five buildings have improved their standing over the last five years, so it's, it's hard to argue with success and the fact that we've been going in the right direction.
Thank you.
So I have a question about the math coach. It's been made fairly clear a number of times that a point two is, it doesn't exist. But is there any reasonable expectation that even a point five exists?
Can't guarantee that, but you're much more likely to get somewhere at that, at that level. How many point five teachers do we have in the districts? Not a lot.
So if you had three full math coaches, how would you distribute them?
Right now, we have one math coach just covering three buildings. So we would, and that's, that's an awful lot to cover. So we would just expect, I don't know, we'd have to work on and schedule one of the large buildings, we'd get a larger share, so it would certainly be a lot easier to distribute three among the five than two among the five.
Joel?
So just to push this discussion along, if you took out the Plum Cove special ed, took out the point two math coach, and put in a one, 1.0 math coach, the number's up to 1, 7, 8, 9, 3, 1, 7.
Why does it go up if you take 43 away?
Because a 1.0 is an $8,000 position, correct? Because a point two is a $16,000 position.
That's not, we don't budget at 80.
How's a point two at 16, if a one isn't an 80?
A math coach, 80 grand.
It's a budget of 57 plus insurance.
Right. But the insurance is in the benefits.
Yeah, but it's.
But it's still an addition.
Still an additional.
Yeah, so.
I'm just using point two.
I'm just asking them, what the number, is the number 80 or is it 72?
I would err on the higher side because you need a more experienced staff number for a math coach than the entry level. So I would, I would go with the 80,000 with total cost.
Have we compared with other schools what they are? I mean, you have a reading specialist here, $80,000. $80,000 for a reading specialist, and then you have a teacher for point six, 40, but then you have a library aide for the high school. I mean, why, we don't have volunteers to do that to our other things? Or is there, we have right here a memory corp, so they're gonna come back and help? have right here AmeriCorps, that they're gonna come back and help us? But thirty-eight thousand for a librarian at the high school versus math for the students.
The high school's a para.
The para.
The library aides are para?
Yeah, plus the insurance. So it's twenty-three thousand, and we added fifteen for the health insurance. Come up to the thirty-eight thousand.
So Joel, are you, something about amending your amendment?
Sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw my amendment. If Tony will second, I'll withdraw. And I will move to reamend the original motion back to, back down to the base budget, base level of two, increase it by one million, seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars, which would be everything on the spreadsheet minus plumco, sped teacher, minus the point two math coach, and plus a one point zero math coach.
One point zero.
I second that.
Okay, but we have an amendment to the motion, and it's been seconded and discussed. So does everyone, everybody understand exactly what we're.
What's the total?
What the.
Repeat again what you just said, did what? Take away what?
The number is.
Oh, no. What are you taking away?
Forty-three, five. For the special ed teacher.
Cross out forty-three, five. And then you add eight, add eighty thousand more.
Joel, was it your phone number?
My phone number was one, seven, eight, nine.
No, I'm right forty-three, what?
I don't have that.
You've got the African header on.
Yeah, yeah.
So one, seven, what?
One, seven, eight, nine, three, one, seven, plus the level service.
The eighty you're gonna add for the math?
For the math coach. So we, so we, is there any further discussion on the amendment to the motion?
Well, not the numbers necessarily. Just a question on another one. I, in terms of the English language coordinator at the high school, my understanding is, I, I just wanna emphasize the need. I believe that was communicated very well by the principal of the high school that we have. Over fifty students at the high school that are English language learners. The trend continues to go up. So if we are adding the English language paras at the elementary, it only seems right that we continue to provide adequate support at the high school, particularly given they're gonna be taking MCAS. We want them to pass. We want them to be successful. We want them to graduate. So twenty-five thousand to get that additional support, I think it's what warranted.
Is there any further discussion?
On the, the high school, the alternatives to suspension, that is a possible grant, so that line item could possibly go away by the time we end up voting the final. When are we gonna know about that?
I was hoping we could this month, because we sent it in December twelfth.
So as I said before, some of these, some of these numbers are in flux, and we will make those adjustments. But right now, I get the impression that we would want to be going with enough money to cover those. Now, the, so that, but the assumption in, just to be clear about that, the assumption in this, what we're voting on is that AmeriCorps will pick up the two.
That's correct.
That's, that's the assumption. In other words, that's not, the number that's being used is the eighty-five hundred, not the thirty-eight thousand.
Correct. But for the EL coordinator of the high school, we're twenty-five.
It's the twenty. So is everybody clear on what we're voting on?
We just need a new total number.
Well, we're, we're voting the amendment.
Okay.
We gotta vote the amendment, then I'll vote the total number as amended. This is financial. We need a roll call vote.
You're taken.
Present.
Kathy Plancy.
Yes.
Joel Frazo.
Yes.
Tony Gross.
Yes.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Cheryl Sweet.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so we have an amendment. And now we're gonna. You hit.
This is the number that Joel said.
Okay.
Just add up the, you'd like to fill the last slide and get you up.
Can you fill the previous slide?
The number, the additional number, you already have that?
Yeah.
One, seven, eight, nine, three, one, seven?
I have three, one, six.
I factored ones ago.
It's a rounding thing, so.
That's with the little loss.
Little loss, okay. So anyways, so it will, can, can we add that on to the forty-three, three, seven?
No, you would add it to the prior.
Forty-one.
The, the prior year, year total.
Yes, 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 yes.
I mean, the FY nineteen, you would add it to. So that amounts to forty-three million, seven, twenty-eight, two, fourteen.
Repeat that?
Sure. Forty-three million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars.
Okay, so the, now we have the motion on the budget as amended. Is there any discussion? Tony?
As much as I would love to support this, I feel the administration spoke volumes about option A was what they felt was the responsible number. So I just wanted to let you know why I'm not going to vote for it.
I'm gonna support this motion, knowing that the numbers always change, and we always make cuts, but this is a budget for public hearing, and let's stop the process and see where it goes.
Joel?
Yeah, as a person of the list, I just think it's important that we acknowledge that it's unlikely the final budget will look anything like this, but it's important to just kinda show for, for the public hearing purpose what the district needs versus what, you know, is reasonable for the city to actually provide. I think we run into a risk where if we offer, you know, a two point two five, and have to bring it down to a two, people go, oh, well, you know, you didn't have to coddle that much, without realizing that to get down to two point two five, we've already taken two off the table of things that are necessary. So again, I don't think this is the number we'll see at the end of the process, but I think it's important to get it out there as what the district needs to operate.
I'm gonna support it for the reasons Joel said, but also by going through this process of what our district challenges are and what the needs of our students in terms of education. It's important for the community to really hear the message that our English language learner number has gone up, that we have made great strides in math, and we still need to continue because we haven't really reached everybody in terms of the growth percentage we ideally would like. So it's not like we are at a ninety-five percent. We still have area for growth. I think the math coaches also help with the professional development of the other teachers. So it's, it's a longer term investment. So there's, I think there's stories within what we need that need to be told at that public hearing, and by having numbers, it supports what we're really trying to accomplish.
I agree with everything that's been said on supporting this motion. I think that we've looked at a lot of services that are needed. We've looked at all the scores. We want our schools moving forward, and I think by supporting this budget gets our schools on the right trajectory that we want.
My only last comment is, I just want somebody to really check those numbers because we're removing fifty-nine thousand, and we're adding eighty. No, we're adding eighty minus.
Removing fifty-nine five.
The sixteen.
Removing fifty-nine five.
Right. And adding eighty.
And adding eighty.
So we're going higher than one, seven, six, eight.
Right. So.
One, seven, eight, nine.
One, seven, eight, nine.
Yeah, I think it's my need for my classes that are, the sixes and the eights are not.
Not coming through.
Your math was right, if that's any consolation.
Just a dose of reality. I totally accept the reasons why we wanna project what our actual needs are. The extent to which this evolves and ultimately becomes a matter of making very serious choices has repercussions throughout an entire district. When you're in a position to go from here to here, there's a lot of tumult that's associated with that process, and the more that you have to reduce, the, the more difficult it becomes. I just want us to be cognizant of the fact that there are human beings involved, and it's a difficult process. I'm not talking about myself. I'm talking about our thing.
So the reality is, last year, we got a two point one nine percent increase, which was not even on the chart. If you put the chart back up, we would have to, well, you would have to.
The one with.
Who's pulling the trees?
Different levels.
The, the different percent amounts that we have to cut. That one. So it's, the bottom, yeah.
So if you look at option C, which is pretty close to what you voted on.
Yeah.
You would, even at the highest level that we put down, three point five percent, you would have to have budget reductions of three hundred thousand dollars. And all the way, if it was two point two five, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand of budget reductions. So Dr. Sapphire's referring to this potential is a dose of reality.
The, I, I completely agree that we need to express to the community what it, what it takes to maintain what we've accomplished so far and to, and to continue to accomplish the great things that we're doing for the students of Gloucester. The reality is, and I, I believe this, that most of the things that are on this list should be preserved, and that perhaps there are other things in the budget, in the, in the, the base budget which may go. And those are discussions that we'll have down the road. But as far as going to the public and making the case that this list of things are things that we need, I'm gonna support this. But that's the only reason, so we can have that discussion. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
You're taken.
Present.
Kathy Plancy.
Yes.
Mr. Frazo.
Yes.
Mr. Gross.
No.
Chairman Pope.
Yes.
Miss Sweet.
Yes.
And Miss Texer.
Yes.
Five in favor, one present, one opposed. We have a, we reviewed our operating procedures and protocols, and the consensus of that meeting was that the, essentially that the, the documents do not need to be changed. So, but we do have to reauthorize them. So I would entertain a motion to reauthorize the, the school committee's operating procedures and protocols.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Question. There are two different levels. One is operating protocols, and the other one is rules of procedure.
Yes.
Those are for both.
Yes.
That sort of scares me.
Uh, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. The next item is, we have two items coming out of building and finance subcommittee from its meeting of December nineteenth. And the first one is to authorize the CFO to appropriate five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars from the main office contingency account for FY eighteen back pay to administrative professionals to rectify the placement of an incorrect step. This was a, a bookkeeping error. First, it was underpaid for the entire year, and it was not caught during that year. Now we have to pay that back pay out of this year's money, and so we need to appropriate it out of the contingency. So we have a motion.
So motion.
Second.
And there was a recommendation out of the ENF, don't we?
Yeah. Yep. It was unanimously recommended to the full committee. Not sure why this got held up, but it did. And here it is.
Okay, is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. And now we have to authorize the CFO to request permission from the city council to pay an FY eighteen settlement payment in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars from FY nineteen. And just to be clear, we have, we have to get, whenever we pay back payments from, from previous year, we, it has to be authorized by the city council. So we have to ask, ask permission. So do we have motion?
Tell me.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. It's unanimous. I don't think we need to really go into school, message school building authority update. We pretty much had that. The presentation will get sent out. It was fairly comprehensive. Preschool location, as it is our understanding that there was a meeting today with the preschool, with.
There were two meetings, actually. One was at ten o'clock, discuss central office, and what our staffing and space needs are, preliminary conversation. And then a similar conversation took place with the staffing that's from preschool at one o'clock today.
Okay. Annual school committee agenda. In our meeting on protocols and procedures, it came up that people were not familiar with the annual school committee agenda. Now, this was developed by the school committee in two thousand thirteen. It really hasn't been reviewed or changed since then. It's, it's been used as a sort of a backdrop. When we set the agenda, we, I always look at that to see if there's something that we need to add to the agenda, and it's included in your packet. If people would like to, we certainly can review that and change it. Not tonight, but I just put it in the packet so that if people would like to bring that up to, for, for discussion and deliberation, we can do that in the future.
Does that get referred to various subcommittees, or what's the procedure to recommend?
Sure. Where would it go?
Full committee, because we know we.
It's the full committee. I, I think it's, there's, there's different things. There's MCAS, there's capital improvements, you know.
Well, that's why I mentioned, it's plural.
Does this come out in June? I mean, in July? So should we vote on it in June?
Well, that would be, I mean, that, that would make sense. There's, there's, there's a couple of things in it that I think are problematic. And it's contractually, because of the superintendent's contract, being, is a school year contract, but we evaluate in December, and we set his goals in January. So we're setting goals for the superintendent sort of halfway in, in the middle of the year. And it would seem to me to make more sense that we would be setting goals for the superintendent at the end of the school year, or the beginning of the, of, of the new school year, not in the middle of it. But, so that's just one of the things I would like to, to, to take a look at, but.
I was just gonna respond to that. We used to do it that way, but we decided new school committee members that came on in January would wanna weigh in on the goals. That's why we changed it back.
And I am going to respectfully request at the next meeting that we review one of the goals you may have been referring to it before, which dealt with the lowest twenty percent performance on the MCAS. And I'd like to stretch that out because of the late start. I'd like to stretch that out to two thousand twenty, the MCAS, with some incremental progress. And I'd like to give a proposal at our next meeting.
So I'm just suggesting that we, that we review this and, and, and put it on the agenda for the subsequent. for the subsequent meeting about how we're going to deal with the annual calendar. Any other new business?
Joel.
I'm just curious, do you have any update on conversations between you and the Rockport School Committee?
We, we have a, we're going back and forth on the criteria of the study that we're going to do, and that is going to be submitted or finalized. And then the, what, I'm trying to remember the name of the organization.
Donheman Institute.
We'll come back with a proposal of what the cost would be. So let's start over. It's slow moving.
Didn't expect it.
No, I didn't expect it. The fact that it's moving at all, I think.
That's a good... Her word, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Do we have a motion?
Motion, Chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.